Good afternoon and welcome to the September session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you have an audible device, turn it off or silence it so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. I'll give you a second to do that. We are going to dispense with the reading of procedures for participating in a public meeting. If you have any questions, there's a copy of the rules basically back at the back table in the room. Ms. Leah Wilson's back there. She can point those out to you if you'd like a little bit of light reading. Suffice it to say that this is a public hearing body. We will take the cases, listen to both those that are presenting, those that wish to speak on behalf of the application, and those that wish to speak in opposition to the application, and then forward a recommendation based on the overall vote of the Planning Commission to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Is that going to be this evening?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock this evening, this same room. Applicant must be present for it to be considered, just as they must be present today for it to be considered. They will need to be present at the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at six for it to be considered, and anybody that has an interest in that particular application would also be advised to be present. The way this typically works, the way this will work, is fifteen minutes will be allotted for the applicant to make their presentation. They may utilize all of that time, or they may reserve some of it for rebuttal. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf of the application will also have their minutes deducted from that fifteen minutes for the applicant. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition, or may have questions, comments, or concerns, fifteen minutes is allotted for that in totality. So if you want to speak, you would be asked to come up to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. I am the chair, so you will speak to me. Additionally, any minutes from that are cumulative, so if you have somebody lining up beside, behind you, please be mindful of that and courteous and allow them their opportunity to speak, but at fifteen minutes we will cut off that particular part of the meeting. Has the Planning Commission had an opportunity to review the previous minutes from this body? Are there any questions, concerns, recommended edits? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the past session of this body.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Steele.
Yes.
I have a second by Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Mr. Robinson, is there any announcements on the agenda before we get started?
Just have one and thank you all for being here. Application 2022-10Z, application by Trayton Homes, is a rezoning on Rosedale Drive over in Deharam area. That one has been forwarded administratively for some updates to their application, and I would assume at this time it would be November 29th, Planning Commission meeting.
All right. I remind the Planning Commission that if you wish to speak during the process of hearing the applications, please turn your mic on so that everybody will be able to hear you. Mr. Robinson, if you would introduce the first application.
Okay. First application is 2022-11Z, application by Adam Baker, Boyd Austin, requesting a rezoned 95 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to R55 Active Adult Residential District for a proposed community consisting of approximately 262 age-restricted single-family dwellings, properties located in Landlaw's 1208 through 1210 and 1239 through 1241, District 2, Section 3. Site address is 2428 Dallas-Neebo Road, as a commission post for. Staff has recommended approval with a 12 stipulations. I do have some modifications on, for the stipulations, and if everybody's okay, I'll just read through them right quick. Number one, owner developer agrees to install 75-foot planted landscape buffer along Dallas-Neebo Road and Sam Alexander Road for screening purposes. The required 50-foot buffer is included in the requested 75-foot buffer. And then the 50-foot buffer would remain on the remainder of the development. Number seven, owner developer agrees to donate sufficient right-of-way for a 40-foot miter at the intersection of Sam Alexander Road and Dallas-Neebo Road. And number nine, owner developer acknowledges the properties in the mandatory Sweetwater Sewer Basin and requirements from intergovernmental wastewater treatment agreement for the Sweetwater Creek Basin between Paulding County, Georgia and Cobb County, Georgia, dated July 17, 2007 must be followed. Flow may be transferred to Copper Mine if capacity is available. And then the last one, it's a variance request as a part of this approval process, is variance to remove the required 50-foot perimeter buffer that's along the common boundary line of the adjacent proposed R55 development.
R55 or R3? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, R3.
Would you restate that again?
The variance would be to remove the required 50 feet, 50-foot perimeter buffer along the common boundary line of the adjacent proposed R3 development.
Okay. Common being the change?
Just where the two developments are adjacent.
Anything further?
There's some information in your packets of some citizen concerns, and we've also had numerous calls. We've had several come to some of the previous meetings expressing concerns on this rezoning.
Is the applicant present? Please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
I'm Boyd Austin. I'm the representative for the applicant and the owner. I represent Key Partners Consulting LLC. We come to you today with a proposal to take a large plot of land that has been owned basically by two families since 1832, since the county was formed, and the present-owning family has owned it for 60 years. So it has been held closely by families for a long time, and they are now in the fifth generation of that family that are the present owners, and they wish to sell the property, and they think that this is the highest and best use. And with that, I will state our constitutional, our preservation of our constitutional rights and the annul item notice that we have the highest and best use of the property, and also would state that we file the required York objection on the process and procedure of the hearing. With that, it's a total of 223.5 acres. It is currently zoned R2, so without any changes, R2 could be built on that property. What we are looking at is a result of a meeting that we had earlier this year when we first talked about the process, and it actually resulted from staff and elected officials that had ideas that maybe we could pioneer a different type of development. So the R55 was the original intent, and the R3 was added as a suggestion that older adults could live near children that would be in the R3 subdivision. On the R55, it's 95.1 acres. It has a density of 262 units, and that's a stipulation that we agreed to, to limit it to that. That's 2.8 units per acre, which is less than the four allowed under the ordinance. It has a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The average house size would run between 1,500 and 2,200 square feet, depending on the floor plans they choose, and at a cost of the house of approximately $450,000 to The developer is willing to assume responsibility to build a roundabout on Dallas-Neebo Road. The staff has determined that Dallas-Neebo may be a dangerous road, and as such, they asked for some consideration, but they had no plans in process to ameliorate any of that, and so we have agreed to develop a roundabout at the entrance, and that will be finally determined in plan review. The roundabout will be new there. It'll be a traffic-comb and device, and it should answer the safety concerns, especially for this development. There is no access from Sam Alexander Road except an emergency access that was asked by county staff. It will be gated and be covered with a Knox box that if there's a fire or an emergency and they need to enter from some other point, they'll be able to access it. We don't believe that there is any significant impact on the school system. The R55 will include a, include language that restricts the number of minors that are allowed to live in that section, and it's very similar to the one that we just recently did, or this developer recently did on Poplar Place in Deharam. In fact, it's the same wording, that no home may be occupied by any person under age 18 except that one person under age 18 may occupy a home if the Board of Directors reasonably determines that the occupancy is necessary to provide reasonable accommodation for the health care needs of an occupant of the house requiring assistance in order to continue to occupy the home. We don't believe there will be a significant number of those, if ever. It will include a pool, clubhouse, pickleball courts. I'm not sure pickleball has reached its potential in Paulding, but it's coming. There'll be a fire pit gathering area, a dock on the lake, walk-in trails, and pocket parks within the development. Fisher Homes will be the builder. It conforms to the 2017 comprehensive plans, comprehensive plan for Paulding County, and it has been deemed to be appropriate for the community residential character area.
Adam, do you have anything you want to add today?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? As was mentioned by Mr. Robinson during the presentation of the application, there are 12 listed stipulations, and modifications have been made to four of those. Are you familiar with the stipulations?
We are. We agree with those. The initial printed list, there was a typographical error, and there was a little bit of clarification that needed to be made. The wording on the, the section on the 50-foot buffer between the R3 and R2, that just means there will be one 50-foot buffer rather than duplicated, since it is by the same builder and developer and access for the properties.
Do you need me to restate the other amended stipulations?
No. And I was going to clarify also that on the Water and Sewer Service that there had been a previous letter issued that said it could go to the Copper Mine District if available, and that's why that was added, but we are in total agreement. I'm checking with Jonathan and Adam that as read, those stipulations are acceptable, and we agree to those.
There any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
You guys are proposing a roundabout paid for entirely by your client?
Absolutely.
And that will be?
And that will be at the single entrance on Dallas-Neebo Road. Originally, that called for two different entrances because of the difference in the zoning, but staff concerns and concerns from others about the safety of Dallas-Neebo and the inability to access the R3 from Sam Alexander necessitated the one entrance, and the roundabout will be fully funded by the developer and on our property, basically.
And we can put that as Amendment 13?
I think it's included, was it not, Chris?
I didn't see it specifically called out.
Or it may be in the...
I mean, you could technically could make it more clear in stipulation number four that the access to development shall be determined during the plan review process, but it would be held site plan specific in this case.
We have been through two or three iterations, and, you know, this generally shows the site plan of the development. It was done before the roundabout issue came up, and quite frankly, the time and expense, we weren't, didn't have the time to get a new one done, but you can see that a lot of the natural area will be preserved there, and this is the R3 on this side, and the R3 down here, and R55 is at the front.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
You mentioned about the occupancy and the age. Who oversees that to confirm that that's...
It will be the HOA. It will be in their documents, and their board will govern that, and it can only be one if they allow anyone less than 55 to live there.
So how do you oversee, I mean, how do you make sure that they implement that into the HOA and then that the HOA actually follows?
It's part of the document that's set up.
The CCRs.
Now, does the developer have, is the developer connected with the HOA? Are they, so the developer is Fisher Homes, is that correct?
Fisher Homes is the builder.
Okay, no, no, the builder. Who's the developer?
It's us.
S.A. Lambert.
Okay. And so once Trayton Home takes possession of the property and starts building?
Fisher.
I'm sorry, Fisher. How, how do you make sure that the HOA adheres to that?
Would you please sign in and state your name for the record, please?
Yes, sir. I signed in. Thank you very much. Adam Baker, S.A. Lambert, the applicant. So the, the way that it would work is kind of similar to any other HOA. So HOAs elect a board, and the board is responsible for enforcing those, and so boards, some boards in some communities are excellent in enforcing policy, some are not, and so typically what happens in an R55 community, we have found and seen in those typical communities, that the HOA boards are very active and take a lot of pride in their communities, and so the HOA is responsible for the enforcement of their covenants, and that's common amongst any and all neighborhoods, and so there's no, I know you know this, being in real estate, but there's no HOA police or anything like that that are out there, other than the community itself, and so the community enforces that. And we have found that especially in R55 communities, you find that the board's very active and very impactful in their enforcement of that, and so you find a lot of neighbors, you know, you have some tattletale neighbors, you have some really nice neighbors that they, well, let something slide, I mean, but you never, you have all kinds of neighbors that are in that community, but R55 tend to be very strong in enforcement, and we've never seen that become an issue in any of these communities.
And it's part of the legal document that governs it, so they have to abide by it when they purchase.
Right. However, what happens is when these HOAs take over, they're sometimes in another state or they're in, you know, Atlanta or whatever, and they don't turn them over to the community until so, so much is, you know, certain percentage is sold. Do you know how that is going to be mandated, like?
I don't know the exact trigger, so the CCRs have not been written yet for this, and so like the exact ones haven't been recorded yet, but they will, they'll mirror other ones that have been recorded almost to a T, and so once those get recorded, I think the stipulation, is it at the 50% mark?
Yep, and then it's recorded final, and then they take over.
Yeah, so it's recorded at final plat, the CCRs are, and then at the 50% mark, once 50% of the homes have been occupied, that's when it gets turned over from the builder to the residence.
Okay. But there's really no way of, like, there's no people out there kind of overseeing this physically until the homeowners take over, is that correct?
That's, that's accurate, yes, ma'am, but typically the way that it works is the builder is the declaring at that point until that turnover point, and so they're responsible for the management of it. Typically what they do is they outsource that to a third party, a professional firm that specializes in the management of the homeowners association, and so because, again, you have, at this point, on a community like this, you have 150 approximately homes that are occupied, those members are in touch with the HOA, there's a management company that's managing that, so they're in touch with them, and again, they tend to police themselves very well in a community like this.
And how about, are these for sale, or any of, will any of them be for lease, and will there be any lease restrictions?
So these are fee simple for-sale units, and so this isn't a single-family rental community, so it's a, it's a fee simple for-sale community.
So what keeps someone from going in there and buying up, you know, two homes and then for the purpose of leasing?
Yeah, so that, again, the covenants and restrictions, it's a filed document that gets filed, which stipulates what can and can't be done with those homes.
And so in those covenants and restrictions, they say absolutely no leasing at all?
I don't think it says no leasing at all, and I don't think that Fair Housing laws allow you to have zero rentals at all, but there is a cap that they typically put in place for that.
Okay, so if somebody wants to go in and purchase it, do they have to live in there for a certain period of time before they can lease it? A lot of times they say they have to live in the home for a year, and then they can, they can lease it then. My, I think my question is what would keep somebody from going in there and buying it just to rent out and maybe rent out to multiple families?
Yeah, so that's a common, that can happen in any community at any time, and the only way that anything like that can ever be enforced is with those CCRs that are recorded. And so once those, once that's recorded, it's an enforceable document that someone can enforce someone to, and so at the end of the day, no one can prevent someone from doing that. What happened, so you can do that, but once that happens, if you do that outside of the boundaries within that CCR, at that point, that's when there's, it's a civil matter that where they get, it's, people go to court and fight it out, and so it's not a, an easy thing to do, and so we don't anticipate that being a problem. We're willing to have, you know, rental restrictions in the CCRs, it's very common, and again, the intent is for this to be a fee simple community where people come and buy and sell their own homes, and it's not a, a single fee simple owner who owns 300 units and they're all being leased out to a, to a company, so, or from the company.
Well, I'm asking all these questions because you can imagine as a real estate broker of 26 years, everything I've seen.
Oh, I, oh, yes, ma'am.
So I just, you know, so you wouldn't mind putting in the covenants and restrictions or on here that no rentals?
Not, we would not want to have no rentals, but we would want to have a small cap on it, correct?
State law prevents.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Sorry, business partner there, I think it's referenced in the ordinance, is that right, Chris?
That's correct. Under Section 210-100.09 Mandatory Homeowners Association, that is a requirement, as well as the policies and procedures, to demonstrate that the community is intended to provide housing to 55 and over, and those, some of the limitations on the county, based on the Fair Housing Act, is restrictions on homes being occupied with at least 80% of the occupied units by at least one resident who is 55 and over, and then we also have a restriction that no more than 10% of the total units may be leased by an individual owner at any time.
And the enforcement arm of the county to address any deficiency in that regard would be who?
During the platting, or the final plat process, we would ask for copies of the covenants that would be at the same time being recorded, that they meet, or what their suggestion is, above these standards, but this is the county that we had to follow under the Fair Housing Act, and if they want to go above and beyond, that's fine, but we'd have to, we'd make sure that they met this standard as far as restrictions on the leasing of 10% or more of the units by one company or individual, that would just be something we would have to spot check from time to time.
So that would be compliance check on the part of the county?
I, we could do that, basically through the tax assessor's office, but the actual covenants and the citizens would self-patrol that much quicker than we would.
If you run a senior property management company, I can tell you there's nobody more vigilant than 55 and older, and knowing, knowing what Edna's doing next door and how she's got something nobody else has.
Mr. Chairman, I will also say, I believe under the Fair Housing Act, there's, I want to say, an annual audit or an annual survey that's required, and the reason they're so particular on this is because you cannot discriminate on the basis of age. However, they've carved out an exception for 55 and up communities, and the federal regulations have said, in these scenarios with 55 and up communities, we will allow you to draw some distinctions based on age, but as you do so, you have to comply with some very, very strict requirements to, to fit the pigeonhole of the exception under the federal law.
Is that the 80% rule?
I think it's 80% is in there, and I believe it's some sort of annual audits and surveys to determine who's in these units, who's in these houses.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any further questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
What, so you've got a, several residents that, after they've purchased the property, and we know the way things have been happening recently with economics and things, that they suddenly inherit their grandkids, how is that handled? Do they have to not allow them to live there, or?
The ones I've seen under the CCRs, they have a, an amount of time to sell or to be in compliance, and I don't know for sure the particulars of this one, but that is the typical wording, is they have to either sell it or be in compliance, they cannot rent it or they cannot occupy it if the percentages are met for the community.
The amount of children there.
Yeah, that's right, and you have a lot of times too where grandparents, it's very common for them to, my, I have, my parents are awesome, but they haven't volunteered to keep my kids for, for four weeks in a row, but they do give them kind of stipulations like that, where they would provide notice, and then they can, hey, it's on notice, we're not keeping these forever, but they're hanging out with us for part of the summer, a couple of weeks for, for Grammy camp or whatever, something fun like that, and so they allow for opportunities and things like that, but if someone can't be compliant with that, they do provide a path out, and so it's not meant to be a rigid, you know, just tough kind of rule that's in place, and it could sound like that at times, but at the end of the day, people need to know what they're kind of signing up for, and the intent is for it to be a community that's occupied by the large majority and under very rare circumstances, so everyone needs to be 55 or older, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the staff a question?
Please.
So with the school board, maybe an opportunity here?
I'm assuming only to them next.
Okay. With, with the 55 and older, is the R55s that we've seen and approved and have already been built and completed, are you guys seeing any activity where you're having to pick up children in those neighborhoods, or is it very minimal, or?
At this particular time, there's no viable evidence that shows that there is a huge impact to the school system off of an R55. So again, we've got a third-party demographics group that we've partnered with, and we don't even, they don't even have that information included inside of that demographics data, just because there's not enough numbers to be able to populate a number to quantify it.
I think that's what we're probably all talking about here, by talking about the minors and the R55s, is the impact of how it would be on the schools if they were there.
Certainly, that would be a consideration. Is there any other factor that would become important to the operations for the school district?
The only other factors that we would have would be the traffic that would be on the road for buses and things of that nature, you know, being able to easily transport the kids up and down Dallas-Neebo, but again, with the stipulations that you've got in here with staff recommendations of the roundabouts, we've noticed the roundabouts on Ridge Road have had no negative impacts to transportation needs that I'm aware of.
Do you have any questions to the applicant on behalf of the school board?
Not for the R55. Once we get into the next applicant, that will be a difference that could...
If, would it be proper to ask what the difference is if it remained R2? The impact if it was not changed and it remained R2 rather than R55?
Do the... Did the applicant go through a study to determine what the, based on the buildable acreage that was available under R two? What would be the yield?
About a hundred and fifty units, hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty units.
But then that would have no restriction whatsoever on, on age basis, so kids galore.
Right, so that would, I don't know if you have those numbers or what, but that would definitely create an impact, correct?
I don't have the numbers, uh, if it were to be built out on the R two, but I can tell you that it would be a, a definite increase and significant increase based upon, uh, if it were to remain as an R two compared, and develop out as an R two compared to a R fifty-five.
We'll, we'll address the other application after we finish this one, but we'll come back to you on that as well. Do you have any other questions?
No, sir.
Any other questions for, for the school board? Any other questions from the planning commission at this time to the applicant?
If we had time before the questions began, I think maybe one member of the Jones family wanted to say something, but I don't know how you measured that time, if it...
That would be, I'll, I'll get to anyone wanting to speak on behalf, if that's what that is, I'll be happy to bring them up. But before you leave, board of commissioners, any questions to the applicant?
The concern that, that I have more than any other is the, uh, capacity, the vehicular capacity on Dallas Nebo Road. And I've talked to a few people this morning, and also George Jones on Friday. You know, you've got the two-hundred-and-sixty-two lots, which is, probably at least one car per, per lot, right on the R fifty-five, and then you've got the R three, which is going to be the fifty homes. But I, I'd like to make sure that the capacity is, doesn't only take in these two new developments, but also, uh, the existing land use and zoning classifications by nearby property, which is PRD to the north, and R two to the east, west, and the south. So, you know, I was talking to Erica before, so I, I'd just like to know that all of those neighborhoods are used in the calculation of the capacity for Dallas Nebo Road.
I will defer to Ms. Parrish, Assistant Director of the Pauline DOT. Do you have any information that you could provide as far as that consideration?
I, I would just say that, um, for this traffic impact study, it only looked at this development and the impacts it has on the Dallas Nebo Road.
Do you want to come into the lectern?
And Mark Akampora is here, that was the traffic engineer, if you
Okay.
need information from him.
So, so yes, sir, so for our traffic to impact analysis that was completed for this specific development, it only required them to look at impacts of traffic that development would have on the surrounding street network, um, Dallas Nebo, Sam Alexander, Nebo Road.
And do you have a figure as far as trip generation that this, this particular application, which is the R fifty-five development, would have on surrounding?
Yes, sir. So based on the numbers, um, that Mr. Akampora completed for this impact study, looking at the R fifty-five, that's two-hundred-and-sixty total units, based on ITE trip generation, that would be about one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-six total vehicles per day.
That's for the R fifty-five?
That's for the R fifty-five.
And in relation to the secondary application that we have, I think it's important that we take it in totality. What would be looking, it's fifty homes?
We had forty-nine, it's five-hundred-and-twenty-four vehicles per day.
That's on top of the, um, on the twenty-four hour study that, uh, has already been done, uh, it shows a total of, um, eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-nine cars in a twenty-four hour period. Four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-four, uh, northbound and southbound in that same twenty-four hours is four-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-three. So that's on top of those figures also, is that right?
And that would be a complete buildout, which I think is twenty-twenty-seven.
That's also on a road at forty-five mile an hour that's designed for six thousand cars, and it's already over capacity.
So what, what we utilize, um, we utilized, um, Greta and the Atlanta Regional Commission to help us determine for, for high-level planning purposes, when a road should be looked at for different levels, um, for capacity expansions. So for a two-lane roadway that's a non-state, state highway, we look at fourteen thousand vehicles per day before we start planning for a future four-lane. So if you added another six thousand on top of what's out there now, that eighty-five hundred, then that's when, you know, we would begin looking at a future widening project for that corridor.
And I think it's proper, talking about the traffic, is there any plan in place or has there been prior to this application for improvements to Dallas Nebo outside of what they've offered in the roundabout?
None specific to this corridor.
And see, one of the problems is the high accident, in my opinion, with, where the roundabout is being proposed, it's not where the accident problem is, it's in that curve where the existing entrance into the, uh, property is. Just between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one, there've been several accidents there with several fatalities. And that doesn't include prior to two thousand seventeen where, uh, there've been a lot of fatalities in that curve. And since then, this, this year alone, there's been two fatalities in that curve.
Yes, sir. So they looked at twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-one. I know there was an additional crash earlier this year that had multiple fatalities included in, in that, within that crash.
Is there any, um, immediate plans to straighten that curve to alleviate that problem? That's one of the biggest problems in that whole area, is that curve.
Yes, sir. So the, the thought was, as we've had multiple conversations with, with the developers on this property, and looking at the, the amount of vehicles that are on, on the corridor along with speeds, because we know people don't drive the speed limit. A lot of times they drive, you know, faster than, than, they feel what they're comfortable driving, a lot of times it may be faster than what it's posted, and with the amount of accidents out there, we've, we've really tried to consider alternatives along the corridor that were outside of just right and left turn lanes, because we knew that there were concerns along the corridor. As we've thought about that, you know, one, one area that, one particular, um, intersection improvement we considered is a roundabout. With roundabouts, you reduce, um, conflict points. So on a typical, uh, four-way intersection, you have around thirty-two conflict points. If you have a four-legged roundabout, you reduce that down to eight conflict points. Um, you also reduce speeds, um, and you have, um, you have the what, you have to look at the geometry, so you, you have deflection angles that will help slow cars down as they're coming to that roundabout. One thing that will have to be considered, the proximity of this roundabout to the curve, is making sure as you're coming up over that little bit of a crest and into that curve, that you have all the sight distance requirements that are needed. Um, and typically, for a roundabout, your speed's reduced down to about twenty-five miles per hour. So you're gonna, we're gonna be slowing cars down, and then making sure we have the sight distance for people to be able to see as they're coming in or out, or just traversing through Dallas Nebo from, you know, Baker's Bridge up to Nebo Road.
Who would dictate the optimal location for that roundabout, considering the horizontal and vertical curvature, curvature of the road you're talking about?
I would say it would be, uh, Pauline DOT. We'd work with the engineers and the developers to make sure it's put in the proper location.
That's during the plan review process?
That would be during the development review process, yes, sir.
And on top of these figures that we're talking about on traffic, that's not including the development across from Ingles or the development beside Nebo School too, so you're talking another tremendous amount of cars that's gonna be daily traffic in that area.
Yes, sir. So, and I can share, we pulled some really rough numbers very quickly this, this morning, this afternoon. Um, the, the development across from Ingles has, uh, let's see, I'm sorry, I think it's a hundred-and-fifty-seven units, and when we look at ITE, we usually look at about nine and a half trips per day per, per unit if it's an R two, R three type development. Um, so you're looking at close to fourteen, fifteen hundred cars per day. Um, the one adjacent to Nebo Elementary has ninety-one units, and we're looking at around eight-hundred-and-sixty-five trips per day. The, the, the thing is, we can run those numbers, but I can't, because they didn't specifically do an ITE, um, analysis. I don't know where those cars are going. I know that that many cars are gonna probably be generated, that many trips, but I don't know if they're going south or north or east or west.
Mark has that information. He did the trip generation, so if you want to hear him.
And see, one of the problems is, not only is the trip generation and the traffic problem, the people that are in that one-half mile area, they can't get in and out of their driveway now, um, which is a huge problem. And I was talking to a person that they cut their hay this past weekend, and they were near, several near misses of people, you know, almost running into them, you know, just pulling out with a trailer loaded with hay. So, you know, it, it is a huge problem in this area. How, you know, and a lot of it is the curve there and the curve further south in what I call Austin Curve, because everybody lives in that curve as part of the Austin family, but, um...
The Austons got that property on a federal land grant in eighteen thirty-two for Revolutionary War service, so it was in the property.
That's a few days ago.
Hundred and thirty years in that.
But, but the thing about it is, is none of these folks can get out of their driveway now without almost being hit. So, um, and a lot of it is gonna be that curve right there at that entrance. There's something gonna have to be done, even with the roundabout put in, that's probably gonna slow some of the traffic going into it, but the traffic coming down that hill, approaching that curve is going a lot faster than the forty-five mile an hour speed limit. One, uh, Gary Gullidge had a trooper sit out there one day, and he sent me a text, and he said, "We've made a lot of friends today, just in one day."
I'm sorry, sir, would you state your name for the record?
My name is Mark Akampora, I live in Atlanta, Georgia, and I'm the traffic engineer for this project. And a, a couple of issues that came up that I'd like to just point out. First of all, I did a traffic impact study for this project. We looked at six other intersections in the area as well as the access to the project, so we looked at a pretty comprehensive area. We went all the way down to Ridge Road, we went up to Dallas Nebo at Nebo Road. We didn't look at the specific other projects that you just mentioned, but we did put a background growth factor of sixteen percent over the counted volumes before we even added the project traffic for this project. So we anticipated that there is growth in the area that other developments are coming. So when we looked at the future analysis at all of the intersections and the impact of this project, we did estimate that there would be growth out there of about sixteen percent while this project is being built and developed. The roundabout, um, and we're working with the county to coordinate to make sure that the design is the right design for that spot. But the roundabout, um, typically will have advanced warning signs, which could be put in advance of that curve to the south, so that, uh, there'd be an advisory speed. We could even have flashing beacons to advise people that the roundabout is coming up around the curve. So that combination of having the roundabout, which is a traffic calming device, coupled with advanced beacons, hopefully will make the, that corridor a lot safer than it is right, right now. So it's something that, there was no plan to do anything. This project is an opportunity to put that roundabout in and make things safer than it probably would be without this project here. So hopefully, when this project is done, it'll be better for everyone.
Well, as a, um, professional engineer
Yes.
for, in the state of Georgia,
Yes.
your report as far as the synopsis of it, what was your overall opinion in looking at this? And I know you're working for the applicant, but...
But we could come back again with another iteration at T-DOT's request and add other information, so it has been comprehensive.
Yeah, I mean, we've, I've, I've done a lot of study through this process. There was the impact study, we did an analysis of access points, uh, we've done analysis of the roundabout, all of that. It's hard for me to answer that question, what's my opinion? Uh, I have a big report that has lots of opinions and recommendations, which the county has reviewed and commented on and gone back and forth, so I don't really have just an opinion on the project, it seems like a nice project. But I'm not being flippant at all, there is, I do have extensive documentation of the analysis, the impact, the growth factors, the trip generation, that's all been studied, and I'm happy to answer specific questions about any and all of that. I don't have one general opinion about the project. I, I, if I did offer one opinion, I think with the, the issue, if I had to pick out one issue to summarize, is or was the ability to turn in and out of this development onto Dallas Nebo Road. Anytime you have a side street stop sign controlled approach, at a busy road like Dallas Nebo Road, turning out of that becomes a challenging issue, particularly the left turns out. The roundabout mitigates that and solves that problem. So I think that that roundabout solution im, ends the issue about access in and out of this project.
That's what concerns me though, that's just mitigates the traffic in and out of this project. Um, we're talking with the figures that, uh, we've been given, after buildout of these three developments, we're talking about nearly fourteen thousand car trips a day in that area. That's a lot in that little space of, um, of a half mile.
Absolutely. It is. Just a couple of things to note. Not all of the traffic from all of those developments will go right by the site, traffic goes in many different directions, so some will go south, some will go north to other directions, down to Ridge Road, some of it will not pass by this particular site. So it won't actually be forty, you can't add number to number to number. It's, not all of it will come right by this segment of roadway.
Well, most, most of the people in that area, that's where they go, is the Ridge Road to do their
Absolutely.
Kroger and, and AutoZone, all this stuff, that is the major area that they go. Plus, we have a lot of commercial traffic, the, even the, uh, dump, not the dump trucks, but the garbage truck from City of Dallas, they travel that road every day, going, uh, to hit I twenty to carry their garbage off. There's a large commi, uh, commercial traffic, uh, cut-through area there.
Absolutely. I, I agree. I mean, there's only so much this project could do to mitigate, and like I said, with the roundabout, that corridor should get safer than it is now, so it could be a win-win. We looked at six intersections in the area, we looked at the impact of this project, we looked at growth as far as commercial traffic outcounts include the percentage of heavy vehicles and trucks out there, that's all included in the analysis. So, uh, this project will not generate commercial traffic. And one other thing to add, this, this type of senior community tends to generate trips outside of the AM and PM normal peaks, so it kind of is flattening the peak out a little bit. If it was all single-family, traditional single-family homes, the peaks would be more acute, so you might get more trips, for example, from this at ten o'clock in the morning as opposed to from seven to nine in the morning. So that helps mitigate the impact of this project. In addition, these senior facilities tend to generate trips at a much lower rate than traditional single-family homes. So this type of development will generate less trips, and those trips will be generated more outside of the peak, a flatter peak. So in those ways, this helps mitigate some of the impacts as well.
It sounds like a floating variable. When you have, uh, R two development, you have a higher number of trips per day where there may be fewer houses. Here, you're gonna have more houses with fewer trips per day, so I don't know that that's necessarily a wash, but...
Well, you also have to look at that peak time too, of the school hours and going to work and returning and everything in the afternoon.
So Mark, my, my hand touch on Mark got him to say exactly what I was gonna ask him to say in regards to peak, uh, trip times. The only other thing I was wanting to add in regards to the traffic that was mentioned, is that when you look at the, um, concern that Mr. Leggett had with, and this is, this came up from some of the commissioners that we met with too, and so we take this very seriously, and so we heard loud and clear that there's concerns regarding, uh, fatalities on that road, and that's horrible. Like, that is the last thing we want to see, um, ever. And so what we, when we dug into that too, what we learned, what are the circumstances behind those, those fatalities? Uh, do you, are you guys aware of, of what, what was going on while those, during those fatalities?
Oh, yeah, I worked a lot of those fatalities on fire department there. I, I physically worked those fatalities.
So they were both, and then you know, I mean, they were both regarding speed, they were, the recent ones were all, um, younger people speeding, and so what we were trying to do is we came back to the DOT and said, hey, how can we mitigate fatalities on the road? Can we, I, I sarcastically said, can we put speed humps in? No, that'll shoot people flying down the road even further. Hey, can we put rumble strips in? Can we put flashers up that say you're going this, all these different things to reduce speed? And all of those things help just a little bit, and these engineers can speak more to that. The roundabout is the only thing that can really do that, and they don't even, even reducing the speed limit's not even a great option because of enforcement. I, I don't, I can't even speak to all that, but... I, I don't, I can't even speak to all that. But we went, we beat our heads against the wall to come up with a solution to reduce speed, which is the impact for the fatalities on this road. And this solution reduces speed on Dallas-Niebo, where no one has been able to come up with a solution to reduce speed. And we're more than hap- we're, we're happy to pay for that solution, and we've come up with one. If this doesn't happen, there's no solution to slow anyone down on Dallas-Niebo right now. And this slows it down, so...
Ms. Paris, did you have anything further to add?
I have another question for Ms. Barrett. Mark had indicated about advanced warning signs and beacons. Is that stuff that you look at? Because I think one of Mr. Leggett's concerns is the curve ahead of it. So, with advanced warning and beacons, at least something telling me or my children that's driving that road that, "Hey, your roundabout's ahead of you." Because the roundabout itself will slow us down. But it's the speed coming around that curve and not being able to see it.
We would have to evaluate that. And it was Georgia DOT's and Federal Highway Administration's guidance on where signs would need to be located. But yes, we could look at having those beacons, flashing, flashing beacons and roundabout ahead signs along the corridor, so you know that you're coming up to something that's not, that has not typically been there.
And that's, you'll look at that at the planery process where there's needed? And additionally, some of the trees that we talked about with the line of sites? Okay.
I have one quick question, Ms. Paris.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with regards with, to those accidents, the fatalities, were they at the curve?
There, there's, there's two different locations. One, I have to look at that. One is within the curve.
Most of them are there at the curve or between the curve and the bridge, in front of the subdivision. They're at...
We have the exact locations.
I don't, the math I have, I think just shows...
And the one that showed the four, the three fatalities, the other person that was involved, he passed away a week later also. So, that was actually four fatalities on that one accident.
How difficult would it be to remove the curve?
It, it would be pretty significant. Uh, let's see. It's a pretty long sweep, sweeping curve. So, you would have, to take that curve out, you would have to, you know, pretty much straighten it out. And I don't, but as you do that, you're still adding more curves to where your tangents are.
One of the problems is this road is actually the same road it was two hundred years ago, except for the bridge down there. That was the only thing that's been changed on that road in the time that it was actually a horse and buggy road. And it was just widened over a period of time. Not even the curvature of the road was improved.
You can see up here, the blue area is, is the property that we're, that we're discussing the, these two cases on. And this curve here is one of the curves that has had issues.
There's a dip there in addition to that that's one of the problems, too. Because as you come around that curve, you've got an immediate dip in that, um, that's where some of the rear-end accidents have been.
So, to look at this, you kind of have like, you can see like a little bit of an S in here. Then you flatten out. Then you have some more curvature coming back towards Ridge Road. So, you could evaluate what the curve's horizontal radiuses are, vertically and horizontally. Um, but to straighten that out, you know, you're looking at, you know, pulling way off alignment potentially and an impact in these homes and this development, along with, you know, homes on the offside also.
There's actually not but one home that it would involve right there in that curve.
Potentially. We'd have to look, you know, depending on how far up we go.
Yeah.
And how much it, it would pull over.
The Tom Simmons home, the old home is now gone. They tore the old house down. Uh, there's nothing there between, actually, the creek on that right side until you get to, uh, the subdivision where the, uh, roundabout would be.
Does having the roundabout in their property, you know, going more west, does it help it?
It's pulled into the property.
Right. Currently, what, what is shown here that they're not seeing on the screen is the roundabout itself. But it does look, from the previous slide, that it's, the majority of it's sitting in, inside of your proposed development.
It is.
And is that helping with the line of sight or the...
It, it would. It pulls it, in that curve, you're pulling it kind of the way the, the curve is going. Um, but then you also have to have, as you're pulling it, you have to have certain angles with coming to that roundabout that makes you slow down. You have to have those deflection angles that are, you know, as you're coming into the curve, but then also coming into the roundabout, it's kind of just, I don't know how to say this.
I think this is the third iteration of the roundabout location, and that's why the stipulation says it'll be finalized, is because it is on the property that the developer and the owner controls, and they have no ability outside of that into the other people's yards or right-of-way. So, it had, it continues to be honed if, that's probably layman speak. But George has worked with our engineer to keep moving that and shifting it. And these iterations keep going. It's just that there's not a final drawing yet. But that's why it's in the stipulation, is that it will be done before any permits are issued.
So, it looks like there's just one ingress egress to go into both of those subdivisions. Is that correct?
And that was done, there was originally two. And when the roundabout idea came up, I'm going to throw Mr. Green under the bus for mentioning roundabouts early on, but that's where it came from. And so, in order to get the roundabout in, they allowed us to get rid of the second interchange or the second ingress egress and put it all on one and flow the traffic through that way.
And so, yeah, so there's no D-cell lane that's needed because of the roundabout?
It'll be, it'll be part of the roundabout. Yes, ma'am.
The roundabout's a perfect solution, and I, I agree with that. But by not doing something with that curve, that's not going to solve the problem.
Well, that's, that's going to have to be...
It's going to help.
It's going to have to be something that the county either puts in a work program or they come up with a, um, a development plan. But, you know, right now, nothing has been done and nothing has been proposed. You will get a roundabout with the R-55, but if it stays R-two, that doesn't happen either. So, you add ever how many of those trips were that you said about the, uh, PRD above it. That's just going to be added trips on it without any improvement.
Erica, what's the right-of-way on Dallas-Niebo? Is it eighty foot?
I believe it's eighty feet.
I have a question when we're ready.
Ms. Gallo, go ahead.
Okay, before, before Erica bothers to sit back down again. Uh, and I really appreciate her, by the way, uh, being so responsive, because, um, you know, just driving out there, I, I will start out by saying, I'm Post Three Commissioner. This is in my post. And I have had more calls on this than I got on property tax assessments. If that tells you anything. So, uh, I got a lot of calls on this, and I know that the, uh, Planning Department did as well. And, uh, so I, some of the concerns, and nobody, look, nobody wants to keep anybody from doing something with their property. Um, I get all that. But there, right now, before I came on, there were two developments already underway, right next to this practically. I mean, the one by Niebo School and then this one, too. So, what I ask Erica is, okay, so we know the road capacity, like, what's going on on that road right now? We know what this project will bring. Do we know what those other two projects will bring? Because they're already under construction. And so, uh, Erica was able to, uh, get out some numbers kind of quickly. And, and I, like I said, I appreciate that. But she came up with, on that, uh, sec- that road, about twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six trips per day. And the capacity, and I just want to understand, I guess, um, if I may address Erica. Um, the, um, you said the level of standard, uh, service standard D is fourteen thousand, six hundred vehicles per day. So, at twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six, uh, trips, that puts us at eighty-seven percent of that. So, really, we're starting to push it. Now, to go from that to the next thing, what does that require? A four-lane road there? And then how does that impact, for instance? I mean, I'm thinking not just Dallas-Niebo. I'm thinking Niebo Road. I'm thinking Ridge Road. I'm thinking further on up, Baker's Bridge, because everybody that drives in Atlanta, especially now with the ninety-two construction, which is what, two years out still, two, uh, to finish up? Everybody's cutting up Baker's Bridge and going out to Sweetwater or somewhere like that, uh, to get anywhere, uh, to Douglas County or get to I-20 or, or whatever. Um, so, I guess I just have a huge concern that we're at eighty-seven percent capacity. So, what happens when we reach that, uh, the other thirteen percent to get there?
Yes, ma'am. So, I, I, I would go back to the, the total, um, total trips for the other two units. You know, we just added those on top of those numbers. So, we don't know which way those cars are actually going to split and go. So, it probably won't be the twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six. But when we get close, um, things that, that we have to do is, is monitor, you know, our, our road systems. Um, one of, one of the things, um, that has been put in place that, that we utilize is our update to our comprehensive transportation plan. You know, we update that around every five years, and that goes in and looks at existing conditions of our roads, looks at traffic, looks at, you know, the shape, crashes, intersection, operations. So, every, you know, five years-ish, we go in and look at, you know, is this road, has it had a lot of development? Have we projected out that that road's had a lot of development? Has it come to fruition? Um, are there things that we need to consider on that road? So, some of the roads that we have tried to monitor, Dallas-Aquara, Cedar Crest, Ridge is one of those roads, um, because we've seen traffic counts grow. Things that we have to do when we see those numbers creeping up is make sure that we are, um, having conversations not only with Georgia Department of Transportation, but our Atlanta Regional Commission, so that we can start, um, preparing, and with our board, of course, um, preparing for how we're going to move forward on those, those projects. If it's capacity, um, those are very, very, very expensive, and it takes many, many years to get in line, to get funding for those projects. Typically, when you're looking at federal dollars, you know, um, if you can get eighty percent, the locals would put in twenty percent. But that's still, you're looking at hundreds, maybe not hundreds of millions, but, you know, millions and millions of dollars to go through those projects. So, for something like Dallas-Niebo, Niebo, um, Ridge, you know, we've, we've tried to monitor those. Um, one thing that we're doing right now, um, because it's not been programmed, is, is evaluating the two seventy-eight corridor, um, because there are no projects that are programmed for capacity along that corridor. So, we have that study, study going on now. So, that's something similar we could do for Dallas-Niebo, Niebo Ridge. Look at some of our, um, higher functional classification roads, um, that have higher ADTs and try and project out what those look like. And then begin, you know, maybe some conceptual studies, so we can get in line, um, start submitting projects to the Atlanta Regional Commission. So, as project fundings become available, then we have, um, kind of have our foot in the door to see, we've done a concept report, or we've done these studies to show that there's a real need here. And because we're going to go, you know, putting our hands out, just like everyone else, for those projects.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know, as I went around on the, on the campaign trail, you know, just getting in and out of driveways on Niebo Road, on Dallas-Niebo, on, um, uh, Ridge Road. I mean, I tell you, I had volunteers that I just had to give them a break and drive and get out and knock on the doors, because they were driving, and they were just, you know, they were stressed out with getting in and out of those roads. And it's, it's really bad when you do that as a volunteer. But what's worse is if you live there and you have no choice. And you have to get out on those roads, uh, to get where you're going. And, and so, I just have a huge concern with the volume of traffic that we are inviting in to a small semi-rural area of our county uh, without adequate road plans. And I know that you can't really plan too far ahead. But then again, if we're at eighty-seven percent in two years, how long is, does it usually take to get a grant and then to get a road actually made? Haven't we talked about hiring a city of four-lane in for like three decades or something? Ninety-two, I know it was thirty years.
Right. Going back to, um, Bill Cruz Parkway, Eastern Parkway, when I was here previously. You know, you can, you can look at identifying a project, um, and then go and try and find funding for it. But then also, if you have federal dollars, you have to follow that federal process. So, you're looking at at least two years for the environmental process, depending on how long it is. Two years for right-of-way.
If they don't find a one-eyed bat or something.
Right. So, I mean, you're looking at ten years, eight to ten years at least, um, to get through that process.
So, ten years is basically what you would expect. Okay.
At least.
The bat you refer to is the Indiana bat, the I-bat.
Oh.
I'm very familiar with it. And two years on ninety-two for it to be completed, that's wishful thinking, in my opinion, even now.
Right, right.
There are a lot of dingbats in Washington, so Washington's concerned about the Indiana bat.
A lot of the rules, yeah.
Um, capacity projects on Dallas-Niebo, Niebo Road, Ridge Road, as it stands. I mean, just ten, a little over ten short years ago, your number-two road on ADTs, I believe, was actually Baker's Bridge Road, which is south of this area. Maybe a little more than ten years now. I'm dating myself. It might even be fifteen years ago.
I brought my ADT counts. If I can find them. So, sorry. So, yeah, this is, this is our, we just recently finalized our twenty-twenty-one average daily counts. We had, just to go on through QAQC, um, right now, Niebo's, um, one segment of Niebo, I know Niebo Road was, um, fifteen thousand, twenty? That's the highest segment for Niebo Road. And then Dallas-Niebo, uh, the highest segment is, which is, uh, we have it ranked at number seventeen right now. Is what, um, Mr., the, they completed with their, their traffic study at the eighty-six fifty.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Paris or any of the other staff?
I have one more question. So, if they go back and just develop it as R-two, no roundabouts required, but they will have A-cell, D-cell lanes?
They will. And, and left turn. They would, we would, we would request a left turn lane.
Okay. Do you want an A-cell lane, though?
No, A-cell. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I...
But D-cell in, we've, we've got away from A-cell lanes. You just have your radius out.
About a left turn lane?
With a left turning.
But do you feel the roundabout's safer than the left turn lane?
We felt, it, it reduces your conflict points and slows vehicles down.
Okay. Well, you can post a road at any speed limit that you can get radar certified, which is based on the eighty-fifth percentile. You've got, what, eighty-five percent of the traffic along that roadway is traveling or less. That's the eighty-fifth percentile. Then you've got that fifteen percent variable of nutcases that insist on going beyond that. Um, so, I mean, I think the roundabout has been, and, um, this is not just related to this particular application. The roundabout has shown itself to be the most effective tool in actually reducing speed, more so than any other device that I've seen or encountered in traffic engineering. So, uh, I'll endorse it as far as it should be in place. And the warnings approaching it. Yes. Both sides.
Yes, sir.
And I've not heard of a fatality in a roundabout like you do in, uh, red lights.
No, sir. They're typically...
You've got not only with a red light, you've got high-speed fatalities. You're not, you're having to pay for the, uh, all of the equipment and all that, and ma- and the maintenance equipment, where you don't have to do that in a roundabout also. It's a win-win situation. But the rest of the traffic is my problem with this, because this is going to look like two seventy-eight in front of Best Buy in the evenings, practically, because of the amount of traffic that's on that road now. And you're putting twelve to thirteen thousand cars on that day, that road daily. It's going to be, in, in five years, it's going to be a nightmare to get through there for anybody, especially residents that's along that road.
Kind of be like Confederate Avenue in Dallas. Right, or Old Village?
Mm-hmm.
Let's, let's go ahead, and if there's any other questions for staff, do you have another?
We, we've talked about traffic a lot, but there's a few other things that we can ask, um, Mr. Allison. I'm, Erica, you probably said it.
Could I, I'd like to just add one comment that...
Thank you, Erica. Thanks, Erica.
Um, we've, we've been bantering around with this eighty-seven percent number, but that's a very theoretical extrapolated number. Basically, we're in the eight thousand range. Basically, we're in the eight thousand range, and the capacity is about fourteen-plus thousand range. So, we're closer to about the fifty percent capacity on that road. What we did was, we took that eight thousand, we added our traffic, we added the traffic for all the other projects, and we all assumed that they would go on the same section of road, which is not really what's gonna happen. So, I just, we're not at eighty-seven percent capacity, we're at fifty to sixty percent capacity. It's still a busy road, I'm not saying it isn't, um, and it's gonna keep growing out there. I just wanna make sure that we don't have the mindset that this road is now at eighty-seven percent capacity, and therefore, it's about to implode. We, we, there is still a lot of room before we get to eighty-seven percent.
Where did the six thousand, uh, vehicle per day figure can come from that was on this report? Uh, on the twenty-four hour volume on Dallas-Neebo Road, um, on the Project South Access location was counted eighty-five sixty-nine vehicles for the study, which is above the six thousand vehicle per day threshold for a road with two lanes. Where did that come from?
I'm not understanding your question.
I'm sorry. Mr. Leggett, do you have the page, is, do you have that page number? Make sure-
Yeah, where are the, on this report, the, says the twenty-four hour, hour volume on Dallas-Neebo Road, at the Project South Access location was counted at eighty-five sixty-nine vehicles for the study, which is above the six thousand vehicle per day threshold for a road with two lanes, for forty-five mile hour speed limit.
The page is numbered at fourteen in the top of the quarter.
Yeah, page number fourteen.
Okay. The six thousand, there, Georgia DOT has tables with thresholds, uh, above which, for a two-lane road, above six thousand is the threshold, there's a different standard for volumes than below which, to determine whether you need left or right turn lanes. So, for example, in my traffic study, I just, I didn't understand the question that you were asking, but, so in my traffic study, for example, Table Five, shows the Georgia DOT left turn lane standards. So, this is a two-lane road, so you look at the two-lane road section of the table, and then there's above six thousand vehicles per day on the road, or below six thousand vehicles per day on the road. So, we go to the above six thousand vehicles per day column on the table, and then we look at the speed limit on the road, and that gives us the volume above which, if we put a, a left turn volume above that number, then we are required to build a left turn lane.
So, that, that would've, that would've utilized-
Okay, let me ask you my question.
For left turn. If the roundabout was not a consideration, they would've used that table to help them determine if that left turn lane was warranted.
Right. Originally, this was gonna be a T-intersection side street stop control, and we were gonna put left and right turn lanes on Dallas-Neebo Road. That design has now been superseded by the roundabout concept.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Can I say something about that eighty-seven percent? Because I said eighty-seven percent, and I wanna make sure that everybody's aware of where I got that. It's directly from adding up the count last year of eight thousand five hundred and sixty-nine cars along this quarter on a day, one day, uh, plus the eighteen sixty expected to be generated, uh, from this development, plus the eight hundred and sixty-five, and the fourteen hundred and ninety-two from the other two developments that are already under construction, which adds up to twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-six trips per day. And maybe, you know, two percent of them won't be somewhere else, but you may never been out past this development, there's nothing out there. So, most of the trips are gonna be back through this area. I mean, if, you know, assuming current patterns stay as they are. And so, if you divide that, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-six by, uh, fourteen thousand six hundred, which is a service standard D, that is eighty-seven point, I can get really technical here, um, eighty-seven point five seven five three four two percent.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, I understood where you got the number from. I just wanted to make sure that folks didn't think that we are currently at eighty-seven percent, and some of those trips will go in other directions. So, it, I, I, I'm not gonna get, I don't wanna get into a debate about traffic engineering. You just, you, you can't just take the count on the road, and add the trip generation, daily trip generation of any development in the area, and all put them on one section of road, and then say that's the volume that's on that road. We've been seeing about three or so percent growth on the road. So, extrapolate that out to see where you get to eighty-seven percent. And eighty-seven percent is just the number that you just calculated, that's not really a magic number of when you need something or not. And it may actually be lower the threshold to start looking at something. This is, I think we're in agreement, it's a very busy section of roadway, and I think we're in agreement that the county comprehensive transportation plan should start considering what are the next steps to do on that section of roadway.
And these total numbers are at final buildout, that's a four-year process.
Or more.
Or more. So, all of those numbers have to, have to take into consideration the phasing through the development.
Well, that was part of the question I was gonna ask, on absorption rate and how long it was gonna take. Um, you did say it's two hundred and sixty-two houses, fifteen hundred to twenty-two hundred square foot? Starting sales price in the fours?
Yes, sir.
Four thirties?
Four fifty.
And Fisher's the builder?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant, planning commission? Board of Commissioners? You may take your seat. There is still time remaining on your time, 'cause questions do not count against your time, neither will they count against opposition's time. But is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? On behalf? Okay. Please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Um, my name's Rick Rife, and I'm a, uh, live in Paulding County, and I just wanna say one thing that I heard here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I did hear from the professional engineer, that this will make this road safer. So, I just wanna bring that point up. Thank you.
Is there anyone, thank you. Is there anyone else here that wished to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none? Okay, please come in, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm Brian Cochran, member of the family, property owners, that's our group right there. Thank you again, uh, all of you, Mr. Wicks, Ms. Parrish, Mr. Robinson, all of you, thank you so much. You gotta think about it for us as a family, generations, um, having this property has been tough for us. So, it was a huge decision. Um, I'm forty-six, my entire life has been on that property, living there at times, managing the property, seeing the changes, seeing the accidents. Um, so, none of this is new to us, but we do want all of you to kind of take into mind for us the decision in selling the property. It wasn't easy, tears have been shed, possibly even right now. We, we didn't take that decision lightly. We had a lot of offers, we considered them all, this group of individuals, we think it was the best decision. We think it's the absolute best decision for the property, for the county. All of us are residents here, so we're not far away, this impacts us just the same. The green space probably means, you know, the most to me. Uh, I've spoken to some of the neighbors also, I call those fence talks, where we discuss these changes, and I know it's a big concern to them. You know, to, to see that disappear, I think that would break anyone's heart. Um, but we, as a family, you know, looking at the resources, we're at a stage, this is the only choice for us. We don't have that capacity to maintain what seems to be a park, in some sense, you know? That's the way we look at it, but we are at a point, you know, my aunt and uncle, uh, myself, all of us aging, uh, it's not something we can do. So, here we are today, we think that it is the best decision, and the plans that they have, we think that it'll be a good, good, good thing for that area. Uh, the traffic, we hope we can find ways to, uh, take care of that. I, I firmly agree, uh, the roundabout will help the accidents on that curve. I've seen them also, but this has been happening since I was a child. I'm, I'm surprised personally, it hasn't been a good soon. Um, but this, without a doubt, will, uh, have a positive impact on that. So, we're always available, you know, for questions and concerns. We've turned it over to who we think are the professionals, we've been very happy in that, and again, you know, it wasn't a decision we took lightly. So, it's in their hands, um, we hope that it works out best for all of us, and we thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else speak on behalf? There's a few minutes remaining. Hearing none at this time. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come around to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Yes. Hi, um, my name is Cindy Richardson, and, um, my property in Bramlett Township backs up to the proposed development of Adam Baker and Boyd Austin. And I wanna address my concern of something that you may think is irrelevant to this project, but it's the stormwater problems. Um, I will tell you, this is an ongoing nightmare for us at the end of Trailwood Gap. Um, I accessed an old archival map of surveys from a historical search engine, which contained the Paulding County maps from nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen ninety-seven, all the way back to eighteen eighty-two. And on every map, there is two natural freshwater wetlands within the proposed development, and, and also a creek called Log Lick Creek, Lick Log Creek, I'm sorry. And as such, we have been subjected, in my subdivision, to savage stormwaters, which resemble a river actually coursing through our backyard. It is, um, I have photos, can I send them to you? Okay, thank you so much. These is, um, the photos? And this was just taken this spring, and it was like a, a small rainstorm that lasted the morning. It has been horrific, and as such, we've been subjected to, um, terrible damage to our yards, all kind of erosion. We can't have things in our backyard, I can't put a, a little gazebo out there. Um, you can't really have anything in your yard, a fence in our yard, there is none coming down our area. Now, um, Lick Log Creek, you can access on a topographical map with the GPS coordinates, and this has been a creek poorly drained. It's a wetland with woods and grass fields that can stay saturated most of the year round. Over twenty years ago, I was Vice President of Bramlett Township, and, um, there was, um, so much flooding in my area. I went and got a, um, survey from the Etowah Survey, um, area that did our Bramlett Township, and I saw two rock dams, and all kind of easements that were put there. Um, the, first of all, twenty years ago, I saw these storm water, waters rising up from Lick Log Creek, and inundated the orchard behind, it's the, a family-owned, um, orchard in the back acreage, which is now up for this massive development. Um, at the time, I obtained a copy of the Etowah Engineering Survey Project, it was dated ten oh six two thousand for Bramlett Township. I had it in records, I sent to Chris, and I sent one to Virginia, has all the old surveys. Um, there were actually marked drain adjustments, ten to twenty feet along our houses on Trailwood Gap, and the next one on Flint Knoll, along this creek and the, uh, natural ditches in this area, back in that back forty. More importantly, two rock dams were supposed to be built to serve our streets, stormwater drainage, at the end of Trailwood Gap and Flint Knoll. Elements that were completely ignored by our builders, who refused to comply with the survey, but it was signed off by the Paulding County Planning and Development Division at that time. It took me two full years of constant bombardment of the storm, for the Stormwater Control Department, and I came with pictures, I came with surveys. Finally, I had terrible pictures of children's toys, balls, strange snakes coming up in our yards, and, uh, a lady, her name was Pat, I don't remember her last name, said, "It's been enough, Cindy, you're getting your rock dams." And as I was standing out there, and I had two neighbors supporting me, um, they bought grass, and I said, "No, no, no, take that back, it's supposed to be rock dams." And they did it at the end of Flint Knoll, one at Trailwood Gap, beautifully, beautifully. But it was a good four years after I, I started this whole thing. Um, that helped with the flooding only about thirty percent. Um, stormwaters have continued to ranch pa, rampage downhill into our yards, into Log Lick Creek and the wetlands. It's just the way Mother Nature created this land. Um, our yards suffered, like I said, the erate, erosion, but every year, for weeks at a time, our backyards are uninhabitable. Um, I am so terribly concerned with all of the hardscape planned by this developer that includes streets, the concrete, concrete slabs for homes, driveways, et cetera, will further create much more uncontrollable flood and stormwaters, which have nowhere to go, except of course downhill, rising up into that back area, and into our yards and properties, that's gonna make a bad situation so much worse.